This regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council will come to work at this time. Council, you've been presented with a proposed agenda for tonight's meeting with one add-on, and this would be this comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse grant. We're going to move that, I'm going to ask to move that out of consent into the item number six, just to get a little bit of a understanding about what this program does. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda with the additional items, discussion number six.
Second. Any discussion here and now, all in favor, say if I would say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the minutes from the September 20th, 2022 regular meeting and those consent items, there's two of them on here, excuse me, two of them.
So move.
Second, we have a second motion, a second, any discussion here and now, all in favor, say if I would say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That'll take us to agenda item number three. And this is the U.S. Forestry Service Canopy Cover Assessment Report. I'll let you lead into that.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor, we have Mr. King and Mr. Andrew Plinger here to give us the update. I think we've got a few slides to talk through.
Just to give the mayor and council a bit of background, back in July, you all authorized us to move forward with a grant to have a tree canopy assessment prepared. And in cooperation with the N.C. Forestry Service, Planet Geo has prepared that analysis. And Andrew, tonight is going to go over the findings of that report. We will make the report available to council in electronic format or in paper format once that's finalized to give to council.
Okay, so do I toggle along here?
The arrow, the right arrow.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. I'm excited to share the findings of the work here, tell you a little bit about the North Carolina Forest Service and Urban Community Forestry Program if you're not aware of it. It is a federal-funded program, three staff, we work out of the Raleigh office, myself, the program head, and a couple of staff members. Our primary customers are you, municipalities, but also our forest service staff, we provide them training at the local level to provide assistance to communities too. What we do is provide urban community forestry expertise to communities, help them, as I'll talk about here in a second, reach a management level that matches their needs and wishes. We provide training and education through partners, N.C. Urban Forest Council is a big partner of ours. We do cost year grant funding, this grant funding was, this grant was one example of those, ultimately try and provide state-level leadership in terms of how we manage our urban community forestry force across the state. A lot of what we do is partnership and collaboration. So our main goal is to move communities up the kind of sustainable management ladder and how we measure that. We check with cities and that there's kind of six standards that we try and move you up. The first four on the bottom there may be familiar, those are Tree City standards. And then moving on to a managing status, we'd be completing an inventory, or excuse me, getting a management plan based on some type of resource assessment and having a professional staff member. This is kind of our broad goal, that we try and work with the community. They all look a little different, we all are different municipalities, and we want to help you try and reach what is a good sustainable management strategy for your community. There's a number of ways getting there. On the left hand, let me say about the city of Jacksonville, you're, we categorize you in that working classification, and a Tree City for 42 years. And over that timeframe, 11 growth awards from the Arbor Day Foundation. So doing great work. You'll see my little tree here over on the left with a number of activities, including some of those standards that I, that I pointed out. Can I stand up?
Yes.
So that, that Tree City kind of serves as that foundation to move forward. And those activities just that I mentioned to move you up to management are those next steps along the way. Probably should take the remote with me. You can use there. So, excuse me, backing up, kind of our next suggested goal from my standpoint and recommend ending is to try and work towards that management status, which includes doing a resource inventory of some type. You need to know what you have in order to manage it, right? So completing that resource analysis, and here is one of those steps along the path, this tree canopy cover assessment. And a tree canopy cover assessment is a land, a land cover analysis that utilizes aerial photography and remote satellite sensing data to analyze and classify land cover into at least these sort of five types. Tree canopy cover, other types of vegetation, soil, impervious surfaces like buildings, pavement, parking lots, et cetera, and then obviously water. And ultimately, we are looking for some major outcomes, primary outcomes of the percent cover in each one of these land classes. And I, you know, as a tree guy, I'm interested in assessing what are all the benefits of those trees, what percentage of Jacksonville is covered by tree cover. But also, these other, these other land classes are helpful for planning purposes. So we want percent land cover by class, we want to know what the ecosystem services that our canopy provides for Jacksonville, perhaps opportunities to add trees, plant trees, canopy cover. And then this also provides us a measure. It's a moment-in-time look when we do a reevaluation in the future, and this analysis did a backward look, we'll be able to see over time with change on how we're working, how our efforts may be helping us move towards some goals. So this analysis was done across three areas. One is within the city boundaries of the whole. Second was looking at percent, those land covers within each zoning district. This is kind of gives some information about the impacts of development and policies around that, census blocks could give indication on equity of service delivery. And then finally parcels, same sort of thing, other, you know, what is the cover on our, each individual landowner, are there opportunities there? So looking at my notes, just want to make sure I mention, so that this, this analysis was utilizing U.S. Forest Service Florence Michael supplemental funding that was authorized by Congress. So we want to thank them all for that help. And, and the work, you know, is certainly a partnership between us, North Carolina Forest Service, and as Ryan mentioned, a contract with Planet Geo, a national urban community forestry, urban forestry consulting firm. So results, going to give you some big picture results. Jacksonville, your canopy cover is 41%. That's, I'm going to say that's good. What is more interesting too, is that they did the analysis in 2014, and it's 2020 because that's the photography, the most recent high-resolution photography that was available for the analysis. But over that six-year period, we've seen a 4% increase in the canopy cover across the city, which is great. So 41% canopy cover, you know, there's roughly 18,700 acres across the city. So 4%, 873 acres were added. To give you a little context, we did four other tree canopy cover assessments in the regional, coastal region, and the high was 51, Jacksonville was number two, and the low was 30%. So just to give you some perspective, take a little closer up in terms of opportunities, the chart over on the right, and then you can see bleed out in the right light green shows that there's 29% of the area that may be available for planting trees. Though in theory, now this in practice would not apply, but you could add 41% and 29%, and that might be your total capacity. Probably too high. The 29% listed is the areas that are unsuitable. So some of those parking lots, airports, ball fields, all those kinds of places, not, not only just impervious buildings and so forth, but it was analyzed down to, you don't want to plant trees in the middle of the ball field. So 29% are really unavailable as it stands today. So what ecosystem services do our trees provide here in Jacksonville? Air quality captures 693,000 tons of air pollutants per year, reducing stormwater runoff by 60 million gallons per year, capturing 9,000 tons of carbon per year, and storing 241,000 tons of carbon. Existing trees are storing that carbon. So that annual benefit, you can see I can translate it into those dollar benefits that are providing stormwater runoff, 538, 250, but the total annual benefits, you know, roughly $2.9 million to the city. So let's take a little look, a little deeper into some of the zoning, the various breakouts. In zoning districts, again, great statistics. Of the 14 districts, 12 showed an increase in canopy cover, 2 showed a decrease, one only slight, residential district 5 showed a 21% decrease from that period, 2014 to Digging into those parcels, 21% of those canopy parcels, now the lighter the color, the less cover, the darker the color, the more canopy cover. So roughly 25% have over that 41% that's the cover for the whole city. If we look at opportunities, 40% have a canopy cover of 10% or less. So those may or may not be some opportunities in the big picture. Census blocks, the report did three different analyses on census blocks, including planting priorities based on some social economic data for each block group. One of these, which is an interesting analysis, is called Nature Score, and it's a measure of the nature and human health to identify correlations between environmental datasets and human health outcomes. So it targets, identifies areas low in canopy cover and other features that by adding tree canopy cover would enhance human health in direct ways. Again, the positive, red would be needs a lot, you know, all the way down to dark green is utopia. So, you know, a look across here, a couple opportunities where we're down on, on the orange side, but still in pretty good shape, but some opportunities. So that's a brief summary of the, the outcomes of the report. In addition to this report, part of this includes this data being loaded into some software that we will share with the city, and it can be put online, that shows some tools that can take this and you can play some scenarios for our planning purposes at no cost to the city. It'll be loaded into this software. It's also being integrated into a site that we're building that's going to share inventories, canopy cover assessments, as we do them across the whole state, and share that information, a place for all the stakeholders to sign on and share things that you may be doing in the city and perhaps partner with others. So this is all part of this project, to help us share this information out and celebrate that work that's being done. As we move forward, my recommendations, or when we're, we're here to help, is certainly review these findings in a little more detail, share them, and, you know, celebrate, you know, we've got some pretty cool stuff here, and it's pretty easy to understand, and let's share these out, identify what challenges that are maybe, and this can be a, these can be serving as a foundation to develop some goals moving forward, be they citywide or down on, well, for example, we have a particular zoning district that seems to drop. Is there an opportunity to address that? Maybe it's not a problem, but take a look at that closer. Finally, kind of that next step, we're, with the canopy cover assessment, we're looking from the 10,000-foot level. My next suggestion is we could do a sample inventory on the ground, which will correlate that data and will provide management information, species of trees, needs, that can then be used to look at what the needs are and what budget needs may be. Review the findings with a qualified forester and then ultimately set, you know, develop a management plan to lead your forward. And that's pointing out that, that last step here on our little climb up the tree. That, I'd say, closing, I did want to thank Ryan and his team. If I could get myself to my right page. And I'll entertain questions while I look through. Yeah, Ryan, Ryan King, Angelina Hockman from G.I.S., and Jeremy Smith, you know, your, your city staff, they're great help, and I think, you know, we have a good foundation on moving forward. I want to, you know, thank you for the opportunity to serve you and entertain questions that you might have based on my seat here.
I have a question. I'm the council liaison to the Environmental Impairance Group, and I think this will be an excellent presentation for you to come to one of our meetings and go into a more extensive presentation for the public to allow us to set some new goals for the upcoming year. Great presentation, thank you.
Good, you're welcome.
This is very interesting information there.
What if a developer comes and wants to say clear a couple hundred acres? Do they have to get approval? Man, I know they have requirements for build back and put up trees and bushes and all that stuff as they develop, but is there a requirement, are they allowed to clear out so much land, or are they allowed to do what they want, or how does that work?
That's a local.
Well, man, I know you have rules for new, I'm saying, are they allowed to just come clear cut if they want to, or are they?
The city of Jacksonville does not have a tree preservation policy, so yes, they could, they would just have to make sure they got their erosion control, stormwater, depends on how they're disturbing it, and then, as you mentioned, whenever the site is developed, we have, and that was actually one of the things that I was going to mention was back in 2012 timeframe, city council, you know, you basically doubled the landscaping requirements in new development, and I think that that may be, when we dive into the data, some of that may equate to why we grew by 4%. It's because if you look at the newer developments that have occurred, the amount of landscaping that, that is required when a development occurs now is a lot higher today than it was back then versus just grass. Now we actually have trees, you know, on, on the site. And then one other thing I was going to mention was, but did I answer your question completely?
Yeah.
So the other thing is that one of the things that we worked on here is originally was the city limits and the military reservation, since that's kind of part of our jurisdiction, right? Well, we actually swapped the military reservation area with our ETJ. So these findings are the city limits and our ETJ, since we were using, one of the categories was zoning that we picked. So that way, that's something that planning, that we can use daily in, when we make policy decisions, and the council can decide using that information. Military reservation, we have a zone because we annexed it, but we really don't do anything with it, so we thought that that was an even, you know, swap, it would work better for us, and, and the forestry service and folks allowed us to do that, so we were grateful that they allowed us to do that.
Mr. King, question, Peggy backing off for Mr. Sosa, so what if you have a developer that comes in and clears the land, so with all of that timber, who gets to sell the timber and keep the monies?
The land.
So there is nothing that we have in city policy that some of that money comes back into the cities to help our displaced or to help communities that are having, low-income communities to give back as part of that to the city?
We just require that they plant back based on the ratios for the street lawn and buffering and things of that nature.
Very informative, but look forward to learning a little bit more about what we might can do in those nature light zones. Be interesting to see what's even possible there. I'm sorry. So it was very informative, and I kind of look forward to learning a little bit more about what we can do about those few orange spots that are nature light to see what we can do. Sometimes, I know options may be limited, but what can we do to help improve the cover in those areas?
You say some communities do have build back requirements.
Well, I, yeah, there is a whole gamut of legislation locally. It's really challenging. It is the number one challenge that communities come to us with development pressures and not necessarily professional staff on board. So I, in fact, I am going to be using funding to fund developing some best management practices to help on these ways, because there, there, there's just a lot of variables in it, so it's not, it's not a simple issue. And it's a challenge for everybody, but there are solutions. It's compromise, you know, you want to allow development, we want to preserve or add canopy where it's appropriate. I think, you know, I think it was really interesting to see a 4% increase, and across the five communities, they were, only one had a slight decrease, and I was really quite surprised, both from development pressure and most of the research we'd seen in North Carolina saying we're losing, but also Florence. And when Florence came through, I expected to see, that could have been a reason, you know, but, you know, that's why we do these studies. And, and I think, as Ryan pointed out, where you are, if you are planting back in, this analysis does look down to that detail, they, they look down and they see that trees were being, young trees are in there, you know, that gets added to the canopy, so interesting stuff.
I actually saw on the news this morning, down in Florida, where Hurricane Ian just went through, well, there was a company, it's a tree.com, I think they're, I think that's what it's called, is tree, you know, T in the end of tree. But what they do is they actually voluntarily go out and replant trees to try to, you know, I guess, take up what we lost. You know, of course, we know that we lose a lot of trees during a storm. I think Bertha was the worst one, where the base lost, I mean, it was just a enormous number of trees out there, in the thousands, and, you know, that, I'm not an environmental wacko by any stretch of the imagination, but I do realize that we do depend on plants and trees and all to be able to, you know, process carbon dioxide and that sort of thing, so, yeah.
They make our communities better, you know, better places to live. They increase property values. In shopping areas, they've been shown to increase purchases by 19%, 12 to 19%. So they have real economic value. The N.C. State, we're about to release, we had them do the regional economic impact study in, I better not quote the figure, because I can't do it off the top, but it was like 3.63 billion dollars annually. The tree urban forestry industry, so between all the services that our industry provides and the benefits trees provide, you know, it's a real economic benefit. Stormwater management is really looking at it closely like that, you know, because I think, well, you know that the rivers in Raleigh, I can guarantee you we're getting more water downstream here than we were probably 50 years ago because of development, but all good stuff, so.
As Andy mentioned, you know, when, when we had the UDO drafted, one of the components was a tree preservation policy. That didn't make it into the UDO, it didn't stay because of concerns with the development pressure, as Andy mentioned. So that is one of those things, of course, I remember that some of the discussion centered around the fact that basically it was just pine trees, it would be better to clear it and then plant back new. And that was what I recall, Councilman Ward, I don't know if you remember some of those discussions, but, you know, so, I mean, some cities have tree preservation policies, it's a matter of, are you trying to preserve, you know, pine forest, are you trying to preserve your historic trees and things of that nature? Because some places have specific trees, say for example in downtown areas, that they want to preserve those old historic trees, so.
There are a number of ways approaching it. I think one of the biggest challenges though is how do you implement it? Most communities have trouble, you enact a preservation or a protection standard, but don't have the staff to oversee that ordinance, and it really is, you know, there are, there are ways of getting, but that needs to be addressed as, as a part of it, because that's where I see many pretty aggressive ordinances go in place, but there's nobody to enforce them, so it's kind of a move.
How does this, I'm sorry, sir, how does this program work in conjunction with the, the new program that has come out of Washington DC with Secretary Michael Reagan being the head of the EPA with regards to Environmental Injustices Act, that there is now over $300 billion to go back into communities that basically have been assaulted over the years? So is there any correlation that this program can possibly work for some areas in the city of Jacksonville where we've seen a decrease in trees in certain communities?
There are a number of programs. We've identified here opportunities, and they looked, we looked, that study looked at the census districts. How do you then affect it, right? Do you want to try and increase tree canopy? So to answer your question, there are significant urban community forestry monies coming down, and we certainly want to direct those to communities of either social, you know, injustice, environmental justice, so the answer to your question is yes, the details are still to be determined. Some of the program where I'm going to be doing is where we take what funding we get, we are trying to, for example, we can, we don't have the capacity to, to work at a neighborhood level basis, we kind of work, help the municipality. So if the municipality can identify a program and package it, and then we can direct funding to the city to address those findings. So I am going to be specifically dedicating a percentage of the funding that we get toward needy communities. More to come, so.
Senator Washington, from what I understand, Wally plans to present this to the Environmental Impairance Committee himself on Thursday, so, all along with what you had mentioned there. And I would also like to thank Andy for assisting with this and bringing this to us, Ron, Angelia, Jeremy, Michael LaCory, and Jason Smith over there, and I'm probably going to forget somebody that, that kind of helped out, but we appreciate the effort and the time they spent on it.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you very much, Sir, Andy, for coming, being with us tonight, it's very good information, Council.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's a perfect prequel right there to what Ms. Jackson and her team are going to present on. We've got some great successes coming up. And so when we're talking about the neighborhood revitalization and some of these awesome programs that we have going on in the city, this is real exciting. Some of these things you're going to start to see overlap. And so when we're trying to develop out our, our policy procedures and our direction moving forward, we've got to start thinking about the big picture. So I'll stop talking and Ms. Jackson, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members for having us tonight. Just wanted to give you all an update about what's going on in Neighborhood Improvement Services Department. We're going to be talking about the C D B G planning and updates to include the CARES Act funding. We're nearing the end of implementing that. Talk about the annual action plan for this upcoming year, year twenty-three. And at the end of the twenty-three annual action plan, we need to start focusing and planning for the five-year consolidated plan. These plans are required by HUD. And the report, which is the end of year report for fiscal year twenty-one, will be submitted on the fourteenth this month. And we'll also be touching on the community development projects. The CARES Act funding, as you all know, we received a little bit over five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in response to the COVID nineteen in March of two thousand and twenty. And we have utilized the utility assistance for, and spent a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We have processed seven thirteen applications and household assistance is a little bit over two hundred and sixty. We've also assisted our citizens for rental assistance, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. We helped the homeless shelter, especially with the kitchen renovation. And we have expended all but about twenty thousand dollars in those funds. We had a requirement to spend at least half of those dollars by December two thousand and twenty-three, and we are well ahead of schedule. Part of the planning process starts with community input meetings. So we have started and scheduled a community input meeting at Sandy Run Missionary Baptist Church. And we're going to end the input meeting process April fourth here at City Hall. Of course, we're going to have some more community input meetings planned during December, January, and again in February before we close that process. In our community input meetings, we invite our Neighborhood Improvement Services Advisory Committee to lead those meetings. Staff is there to offer support, but they will engage the community to input and give a voice and tell us how we should spend those entitlement funds that we get from HUD every year. Now moving into what we're currently doing in Country Club Villas. Country Club Villas is a neighborhood that is next to the mall, off of Country Club Road. It has Murderwood Circle, Murderwood Court and Villa Drive in that neighborhood. Of course, that neighborhood has some negative behaviors with the police intervention, the sanitation streets. I want to give thanks to those. As far as the police intervention, we were just looking at where we started with police calls. We had about fifteen, over fifteen hundred police calls that were going on in that neighborhood. And now we're down to a little bit over four hundred so far. So the neighborhood, the calls for service for the police has dramatically dropped since we have started our revitalization strategy efforts in that neighborhood. I also want to give thanks to the Streets Department for keeping the ditches and the perimeter area clean. I think that was the start of the neighborhood trying to make an effort to clean up the area. Also, the sanitation departments, they gave us a program that's only exclusive in the neighborhood to help us mitigate having over two hundred and fifty trash receptacles all over the neighborhood. So it was a city effort with your support and we appreciate it. So as I mentioned before, this was what we saw in Country Club Villas when we started the revitalization strategy effort. And you can see there are a lot of trash cans around the neighborhood. And now this is the neighborhood after. This picture was recently taken last week. And the trash receptacles are located strategically throughout the neighborhood. And the residents will just go and put their trash there. It's an improvement and we're very, very pleased when you first drive into the neighborhood. We currently have some renovations going on in Country Club Villas, four twenty-seven and four twenty-nine Murderwood Circle. They are currently being renovated. We're almost finished with four twenty-seven Murderwood and we're completely finished with five sixteen Murderwood. And those are available for homeownership, opportunities for people who qualify through our HUD program. So what we did was purchase the units that were in the worst condition in the neighborhood. We knew that investors would not go in and improve those units. And those two units, they had some very, very severe damage. And you can see, here's the rear of those units. So what we did was we purchased those units and now that's the back of those units. And currently that is the front of those units. As I said, five twenty-seven is currently almost finished. There's the kitchen area, the dining room area, the living room area, and one of the bedrooms. We also have five sixteen Murderwood that have been completed. It is on the, I want to say on the market, but we have it for sale. And wanted to also share that that is their brand new kitchen that we have. And we also expanded the outdoor living space. We also have some future activities. We're getting ready to kick off our October nineteenth meeting to develop a climate resiliency plan. We were selected along with thirty-nine other cities. They only selected forty cities throughout the United States. Jacksonville was selected to receive technical assistance from HUD. It is free, we do not have to pay for it, to help us develop a climate resiliency plan so that we can get all of our resources together and develop a comprehensive plan. So we have scheduled these meetings with our cohorts. And we're going to identify current mitigation plans that we have, current federal, state, and local resources that we have. And we're going to put it in a comprehensive plan. HUD has recognized that cities who, I want to say recovery, recover quickly, they're, they're able to maintain and get back to their normal lives. So it is very important for HUD to address that urgent need requirement so that the communities can get back on their feet and recover quickly after a natural disaster. And finally, HUD has allowed us to be a HUD certified counselor agency. We're finalizing that requirement. Why do we want to be a HUD certified counselor agency? HUD has required all clients going through our programs, especially our Down Payment Assistance Program, to participate in a HUD certified counselor agency program. So currently you have two certified housing counselors, myself and Pamela Traptan. What that means is we're going to be on a national registry that HUD is going to identify. If anyone search for a housing counselor agency near you, the city of Jacksonville will be listed in that national registry. We will be one of two east of Raleigh in this area in the whole state that will be a HUD certified housing counselor agency. The city of Wilmington, they just recently finished their process. So I'm looking for us to finish ours by next month. And we will, of course, bring that report to you. So I will tell you that that test was not an easy test, even though I've been in the, in the, the industry for over twenty years. It was not an easy test, but HUD says that in order for us to assist, we need to have that information at a level, and that level of expertise. So I want to congratulate Pamela also for passing the test. Not that many people are opting to take the test and pass. So that's one of the reasons why the city of Jacksonville will be one of two east of Raleigh.
Congratulations.
And now I want to pass it over to Pam so she can talk about our neighborhood initiatives.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So with our neighborhood initiatives, this is a program that allows us to continue to move forward while we're working with future homeowners. We are currently under contract with two oh eight Queens Road. This lot specifically will be having a new home built on it within the next few months. The luckily homeowner, she has gone through a homeownership class. She has taken the one-on-one credit counseling that we provide and making sure that their credit score is able to allow them to be pre-approved as well as taking care of the debt that we identified on their credit report and paying those off. So by meeting those requirements, we are now at the process of being able to have a home built on this specific lot for our future homeowner. So I've stated the Homebuyer's Education Course. That is the very first step that we require anybody that is interested in purchasing a home within the city of Jacksonville or just the fact that they have an idea of purchasing a home. Once that simple thought has came to your mind of saying, I would like to be a homeowner, then the next thing that we ask of you is to contact City of Jacksonville Neighborhood Improvement Services at nine one zero nine three eight five two eight six, because we then want to sign you up for the class. The class takes place on Saturdays and it's only five times a year that we have the actual class. Our money management classes take place four times a year. Those classes have the luxury of having professionals come to the class from our lenders, realtors, home inspectors. We have financial consultants. We also have home maintenance providers. We've partnered with Habitat for Humanity and we've also partnered with NC Works to be able to come forth to future homeowners and explain to them what does that process look like when they are thinking about becoming a homeowner. So far this year in two thousand and twenty-two, we've had seventy-nine participants come to the class for our Homebuyer Education Class. The next one that we have is coming up on November fifth. And then our money management seminar, it's a two package deal when people sign up because you cannot purchase a house if your finances are not together. So to be able to come in for a three-hour seminar where we go in-depth to budget counseling, we look at credit scores, we understand how does your money work for you versus you working for your money? We really go in-depth. That's with a financial consultant named Ms. Rachel Gerald. And we've had total of eighty-eight participants in that class. Our upcoming schedule for our money management, it was this past Saturday, but Hurricane Ian changed that for us. So for those that have not had an opportunity to sign up, the next class will be December third. And that will close out our two thousand and twenty-two schedule. With one addition that I do want to announce is for our Jacksonville Youth Council. So Jacksonville Youth Council, we have a J Y C observance ceremony. It was initiated last year, last year being fiscal year in June as a response to the Robb Elementary School shooting that took place. One of those unfortunate instances that made me say, what can we do here in Jacksonville? We have a lot of ceremonies that take place. So with the youth council, especially being school-related, we decided to have that same concept, but for a youth-led event to take place. After the June ceremony, the goal was to make it a proactive ceremony. But unfortunately, we had another instance the beginning of the school year. So we have our second ceremony tomorrow at five PM here at City Hall. And it will be in response to standing up against bullying and bringing an awareness. So we asked for those that are able to come in attendance to come out tomorrow at five PM here at City Hall. And it will be a short, brief ceremony to just bring awareness to bullying. And we are in partnership with Stand Up and Be Heard as well.
And now we would have Jason come up and give a status update for code enforcement. I know how you all love code enforcement.
Yes, it's really me, for those who don't recognize Jason Larson. So really we want to, I had about a hundred and forty-seven slides prepared for tonight, but I just thought that was a little long. So we cut it down to one tonight. So before we get into that slide, I just really want to edify your code enforcement staff first and foremost, including Deputy Warden with us on our, on our team. But with the, some of the changes that we've made, we've brought on Debbie Jefferson as one of our administrators. Bringing on not only Debbie, but her position has really increased our ability to, to do our job. So we, we do a lot through her, all of our notifications, which is a big part of what we do. That has been a, just a blessing to have her with us on staff. And then we also hired our part-time code enforcement officer, Copeland Mills. He retired from, from J P D and that, that has been a blessing as well. Earlier, we talked about adopting a tree ordinance that might be not so easy to enforce. We do have, we do have some of that already. As you can see, last year, two thousand and twenty-one, we performed over three thousand four hundred and fifty code violation investigations. So that's between our senior officer, Frank Brill, and our newly hired Jonathan Lancaster wasn't a part of that. But that was including some of Phyllis Harp's number. And then, of course, some of, some of Coke when he came in in August. So thirty, over thirty-four hundred investigations. And that includes fifteen hundred zoning inspections. So we have, for those of you who don't know, we have two different things going on with code enforcement. We, we operate and enforce some out of the Muni Code, which is where we get our police power, our police authority. That's where our nuisances come from. So our, our, our summer season, our, our high grass and weed action, that's kind of like our lunch rush for a fancy restaurant, which is summer, which is from March to November. We're, we're, we're doing that, so we're, we're pretty busy. But that's not all that we do. So we do high grass and weeds, a lot of our junk vehicles, that comes out of the Muni Code. And then also minimum housing. And I'm, as, as all of you are aware, that's, that's a really a big issue that we're dealing with, especially some of the exodus from, from New River, people coming in from all over. We, we definitely have a housing issue. But one of the changes that I'm really excited about, that I was frankly excited about when I got hired is that all of our departments have really started to come together. Not only in Neighborhood Improvement Services, there was, there was kind of a, code enforcement was kind of a side dish before I got here. They weren't really involved with Neighborhood Improvement Services, even though they were under that department, under C D. So we really worked hard to find goals for the community, especially with the housing issues and minimum housing. And, and working with Ms. Jackson and, and with Pam is just, has really been helpful in being able to do some of the things that we do. Not only that, I had, I had three inspections today with three different J P D officers, including Sergeant Woodell. So we've just kind of the understanding of the needs the community has and being able to work with all the different departments, you know, sanitation, streets, stormwater, it's just, it's endless. So being in this department and being able to serve the community, serve the needs of the, of the board and being able to get things done together is, has been really exciting, I think. So Debbie's been great. Coke, Copeland Mills has been a great addition. But, yeah, we, we also did C E teams, okay? So I- So our CE team is our commercial enforcement. So we've always had it, but we haven't always enforced it. So the, the, the four of us mainly, myself, Danny Bryan, the building official, Sergeant Waddell with JPD, and Danny Bryan from building, I'm Brian Kelly, I'm sorry, from fire. We've come together and, and formed this team. I think we've, we spoke a bit before. But we're really trying to do what we can commercially for the non-residential building standards. There's, there's a lot of history in Jacksonville, which means unfortunately, there's also a lot of old uninhabitable buildings in Jacksonville. So we've really tried to come together and create this group so that we can get this slumming of blight abated, and we can, and we can help development. So what we do, we actually get together, sometimes the fire department has a annual, biannual, whatever inspection. And that crew, whoever's doing that inspection, will identify some potential issues regarding non-residential standards. And then we'll get informed, and then the three or four of us will get together with the owner to identify the problems. Because what has happened sometimes in the past is an entity will go out, let's say the fire department goes out, they see all the problems, and they say, okay, you should quiet away, get to go, no problems here. And then myself or the building official will come back a few days later saying, timeout, that's, that's not okay, there's some issues here. So we, we don't go as a bully group, but we really do go as, as a representative, as a city, as a whole, so that all three departments can address any issues together. And it really helps, I think it really helps the community to be able to understand what the issues are. And then at the end of the day, when we leave, there's, there's no question about what they're supposed to do, what the requirements are, what the expectation is. So that's, that's really been a big help too. This is actually the Central Cafe. I keep calling it 260 Cafe for some reason.
It was the Central Cafe.
It was the Central Cafe. That's being taken down. And another good thing about this CE team is we do, we will sometimes bring it to council. But this is, this is a program, we came in, we talked to them, we had a conversation. We said, these are the standards that you're not meeting, and they need to be abated. And they're abating it themselves. So this whole project is being taken down as an initiative from the CE teams, but without any funding from the city itself, which is, which is a great thing. So that's just some of the changes that we've had. Again, just having the, the, the two that we've, we've added with, with Debbie Jefferson and, and part-time with Copeland Mills. Of course, he's only here this year throughout the end of October. He'll come back next year. So we're gonna hit the grindstone here even harder in a little bit. But just really wanted to thank the board for all your long support. It's one of the things I told Josh when he got here, that we, we've always had support from the board. We've always had support from the department, and we just really appreciate that continued support.
And that's all we have. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Just a comment. I, I drive through Country Club Village, Myrtle Wood Circle, once a month. I, I do inspections for property management, and I can definitely see a big improvement. It's looking a lot better. In fact, I was actually surprised today how, how clean, clean it was imperatively. So it looks, looks a whole lot better.
We're very proud of that community.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
We're gonna talk about downtown greenways, construction options.
Mayor just keeps going. So the symmetry here, as I said, is we're, we're just keep getting better and better in terms of the things that we're doing to, to make opportunities better. So now Mr. Prince is gonna be able to give you another project. As if there wasn't enough yet, we could have canceled the meeting and walked out happily with the progress. But now, oh wait, there's more. So this infomercial just keeps getting better. And he actually has some dollar options here, so you can get the $19.99 version, or you can get a buy one, get one here, so. There's more.
There is more. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Like Mr. Ray said, we're gonna spend just a few minutes on an update of where we are with the Downtown Trail. You know, we've talked about this many, many times before, so we're not gonna belabor that piece. But then we're also gonna review some options that we have in front of us to move forward, hopefully to construction. So these slides I've used, I can't tell you how many times, but for the folks in the audience here, as well as those at home, the Downtown Trail is a segment that's shown there in red between New Bridge Middle Street, New Bridge Middle Street, right. New Bridge Middle School and the Thompson Street Boardwalk. And of course, it runs by Riverwalk Park. Zooming in a little bit, this is what it would look like on the ground. Of course, this is my crayon drawing of it on the ground. It would begin at the end of the Rails to Trails over at New Bridge Middle, continue down Railroad Street. We would end up having to narrow the street to a certain extent to make that happen so that we can get by the CenturyLink Building. Then it'll continue down Railroad all the way to Court Street. We'll have pedestrian crossings at every location. Down Court to Newberry Street. And then, I don't know what happened to the slide here, but it shifted. Anyways, it goes off the slide onto the Thompson Street Boardwalk, and then all the way down to Sturgeon City, which is our intended destination. So the concept right now is to actually give our Rails to Trails infrastructure a, a final destination, okay? Whether it be the, the, the Sturgeon City, or whether it be Riverwalk Park, there's just a lot of amenities downtown that you could use it for. So the estimated cost, we bid the project three times, and every single time the project has come back over budget. And the reason being is, is because when we originally budgeted for the project, it was around 2017, 2018. And we know that the world has changed pretty significantly since then. But looking at the numbers, we've compared this to what engineering has seen with some of the paving contracts and what DOT is seeing from some of their work. We feel like the total is reasonable, given the scope of work. But also note that this is a fully allocated cost. So it includes construction, as well as some of our inspection services and testing. And then with something like this, we don't put a shovel on the ground unless there's a contingency budget. This is a 5% contingency. So right now, as I mentioned, funding is short. And again, this is a 2017, 2018 budget number. Compared to where we are with the project cost, there's a pretty large gap. That's a big number, no two ways about it. But we've come up with, with some options that we feel could be palatable in order to move this thing forward to construction. One, of course, is simply increasing the amount of revenue to support the project. The good news here is, is that while DOT initially had a cap on their contribution at $639,000, they support the project, and because of our relationship with them, they're willing to remove that cap and are willing to support 80% of the total project cost up to the $1.3435 million. So that's, that's a, a big piece of that, that $600,000. Now, to get there, we would have to contribute some additional local match, $127,000. But that pales in comparison to the $600,000 that we were looking at just a minute ago. So let's look at option two here. Option one didn't change the scope of work for the project. It's simply what we have designed is what we would build. Option two is to, of course, increase the revenue, which we would have to do regardless, but to consider taking down the traffic signal at New Bridge Street and Railroad Street. And of course, we recently did that at Warlick and New Bridge. It was a little bit challenging to start with, but overall, the, the feedback has been very positive since. We also collected traffic counts at this location, and we looked at the crash pattern. The counts do not warrant a traffic signal being in place. And there was only one crash at the intersection that had nothing to do with the actual intersection itself. So we feel that it's justified option, but it's also a preference as to whether or not we would like to take the signal down. If so, this is what it would look like. And I mentioned before that we're gonna have to narrow the road in order to fit the trail in. So some of the left turn lanes out there are gonna have to be removed anyways to make way, way for the trail. Since we have one lane approaches in all directions, it, it really makes this a prime candidate for an always stop, if that's what we choose to do. The benefit of the always stop is, of course, everyone has to stop. So it's gonna reduce speed. And also, one of the very tangible benefits here is if we're gonna increase the amount of pedestrian traffic, it brings more awareness, and it improves the safety for the pedestrian as well. Not to mention the long-term maintenance cost of a traffic signal, which I'm not gonna share that number with you, but all, what I can say is right now that signal needs about $20,000 worth of maintenance that we've deferred until we make a decision tonight. So those are ongoing types of costs. So the recommendation is that council consider allowing us to go with option two, where we'd award the contract for $1.03 million. Of course, that's about a $400,000 reduction from the previous option. Traffic signals are very expensive. And that we make up the local match with money that's already allocated in the CIP. So we wouldn't be asking for new money, we would be re-appropriating money that already exists. The good thing here is, is that typically with the CIP project, $100,000 is allocated. And so we design $100,000 worth of sidewalk, and then we go build it, okay? But we're trying to work smarter, smarter than harder here in the fact that we're using CIP money to leverage other people's money to make improvements with this project. But with the balance of the CIP project, we're also planning to work with DOT to get money to, to build sidewalks on Gum Branch Road. So the deal that we're working with them right now would put sidewalks on both sides of Gum Branch between Doris, Doris, yeah, Doris and Nottingham. And our contribution would be the design and the cost estimation. Once we get that done, they're willing to commit the funding to do the construction. So again, we're trying to work smarter than harder here and stretch the city's dollar as much as we can by leveraging dollars from other folks. So a, at this point, really just like to get some feedback on either of the options. Both of them are viable. The question is, do we support the concept of, of removing the traffic signal?
Is that the primary difference between option one and two, the traffic?
That is the only option, the only difference, sir, yes.
I think we'll get a little congested there sometimes, especially like Nashville line out. I remember traffic a lot before, man, but I guess you could put police officers, you know, for those types of events. But I mean, just daily traffic, I mean, it might increase a little bit, and I don't see it's worth spending the money over, I mean.
So the volumes were so low, they didn't even register on the charts that we use to evaluate for signal warrants?
I just have bad luck with traffic.
We, we know what you drive. That's exactly what it is. So, but the other thing too is, say, you know, redevelopment really starts to blossom in downtown, and we want to go back with a traffic signal. The, this option would allow us to do that at some point in the future. So it doesn't prevent us from building a traffic signal. It just defers that while we don't necessarily need it.
Let's do it.
With the narrower lanes and the turning lanes removed, one lane each direction is perfect, like you said, for a four-way stop. It makes sense.
And Mr. Warden, do you want to tell them about the feedback that we got from Mr. Wright the other day?
All for it.
Ernie Wright was very supportive of the always stop.
He thought, he thought the, that it would make that intersection safer, and, and he was all for it. He thought the, thought all the attorneys would be in favor of it too.
We sampled the attorneys.
They have an opportunity to have some conversations in lawyers' lounges. And Mr. Wright reported that the, taking away the signal at Warlick and New Bridge, that has been nothing but positive input that he had heard in his conversations, which I think is a, a big plus.
That's right there at it too.
Well, and there are other residents in the downtown area that have given us positive feedback. There were concern, again, there were concerns to start with, but once people got used to it, it seems to be working just fine.
Brief education window.
As with, as with any traffic change, for sure.
Is there a motion for this?
I'll make that motion for option two.
I'll second it.
I'm just gonna second any further discussion. Here, none on paper, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
All for it.
So Mayor, one more slide, if you will. What you'll see on your agenda next, uh, next meeting would be several consent items. Of course, you can pull them if you want to, to talk about it a little bit more. But we, we will have the contract award, we'll modify the DOT agreement to remove that cap. And then there'll be a budget amendment and a CIP amendment to line all the funding up. If all that goes according to plan, the notice to proceed would be November 1st. Great.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, sir.
Tell us a little bit about the grant, Chief.
Try to be polite.
I appreciate it.
I'm gonna take a chair.
Mayor, Council, I'll, I'll let Deputy Chief Weaver talk a little bit about the grant, but I'll say just a few things. This is a partnership with the county that we've had for the last three years. It started with the COSAP grant. And if you remember, a number of years ago, we hired Treatment Alternatives for Safe Communities, and they came in and did some strategic work for us. And so part of that strategic work talked about the DIX Crisis Center and how the DIX Crisis Center, but also the gap in services that we have. And that's kind of emphasized in this grant. In this grant, we have an opioid fatality review team. And that review team looks at all the opioid overdoses that we have in our community and, and looks at why, why those folks overdosed. And, and a lot of it is that gap in service. And that's from the back door of the DIX Crisis Center to the next level of treatment. And so the COSAP grant focuses mainly on that gap in services. And the last three years, it's been, it's been successful. And I think the next three years going with this grant will be as, as successful. So now I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Weaver, and she can talk a little bit about what's, what's in that, in that grant this year.
So as Chief said, thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. And as Chief said, that we did begin this grant in 2019. So this grant is actually a continuation of that grant to continue the services that are already in place and expand upon them. This grant includes, like Chief said, the opioid fatality review team, which is a partnership with the Health Department, EMS, the hospital, local government agencies, law enforcement, Sheriff's Office, all of those entities, service care providers, all get in one room and actually talk about the fatalities that we've had and do basically a case analysis on it, and who had interactions with them, and where, where did they touch the system, and where could we have had other services in place? Or were they even in the system anywhere that maybe we missed them somewhere? And what, what could we have done to prevent or prevent this in the future? So that's just one piece of it. It also provides for peer navigators to help. One of the things that they identified was those, when they leave the back door of the Crisis Center or the hospital, getting them to their next appointment, those 24 hours, 48 hours, until they actually get to, or sometimes a week later when they get to their first appointment. The peer navigators are there to be that contact and actually ensure that they are getting to those next services and following up with those services, because that's where they tend to, to relapse into the issues, because they're going right back to where they were at, and they don't have that support system. And the peer navigators are actually people that have lived experience, so they can relate to them in a different level than law enforcement can or treatment providers can. So the peer navigators, the opioid fatality review team, it also provides for a substance abuse counselor that we have within the police department. It actually works with the school system and helps to identify and provide services to children that are either experiencing substance use disorders themselves or are in a home where there's substance use disorder, and provide resources and services to those children. The grant also provides for counseling services through a community counselor to those children that are trying to reduce their ACE scores, their adverse childhood experiences. So get them those resources, and we've had that, that position has really been a tremendous resource for the community in getting even some children into recovery services. So this grant will continue those services. The other piece is the COSAP Coordinator. It helps to manage all of these pieces. It helps to manage all of these pieces and this, the police department's lead program, which is the law enforcement assisted diversion. This is where an officer will encounter someone, um, with user amounts and can, if the person would like to enter the lead program and they don't have a violent history, they're not, you know, in doing anything violent that would hinder or the, uh, the living, livability of our community, um, they can actually defer and not actually charge them. And if they complete the program and complete treatment and complete those services, then they never get charged with those and that, um, their, their possession actually gets destroyed. So that evidence would then be destroyed and they would never get charged with those events. So, because the goal is to keep them out of the system and get them back on track so that they can be productive members of our community and they can be part of the solution and not part of the problems that are going on. The lead program and then the, there's one more piece.
Okay, um, quick question here. Project fully funded under this grant.
If it's 100%.
It's 1.3 million.
But a budget sharing.
Million, lord, million. 1.3 million.
$900,000 was the, uh, the first, first series of grants. This is 1.3 million dollars. And I, I can say that, uh, this, that the program in the schools, um, actually received some national, uh, recognition at the, um, at the conference, the COSAP conference a couple of years ago, right before COVID had hit. So we're one of very few communities that are actually addressing the children as part of the process. So somebody overdoses tonight, if, uh, the officers know they have, uh, children, then they can be identified and through the SRO, um, Heather can go in and, and talk to those children and make sure that they're getting the services they need. So, um.
Chief, um, I have a question. Um, do we have any data that tells us, um, what the breakdown of individuals um, in the city of Jacksonville is actually suffering from abuse with the opioid? And the rea, and the reason that I ask this question is because, you know, during the late eighties and the early nineties, there was a horrific addiction with the crack cocaine and there was no monies coming back into the communities to support these families. Oftentimes, the individuals was incarcerated. They were taken away from their families, their children placed in foster care. There was no community resource, there was no community outreach to really reach out to these individuals. And it was a real addiction that they were dealing with. Still to this day, many of them have not received the type of support, the psychoeducation that they needed to overcome. So for those individuals that were lost or the generations that have stemmed out of these families, are we seeing any of these families re-entering under the auspices of the opioid addiction?
So that's the other piece that I forgot. We do have a research, research component to this, um, that does, is looking at all the data and bringing it in. We do have a report from the first two years that we can forward. Um, and then we can kind of dig into that data and look a little bit closer and see what's there.
And the reason that I ask is that I remember when I attended the, um, elected officials meeting on, with the base commander back in August. And Sharon Russell was giving us, uh, update about the opioid crisis. And, um, she indicated that now they are starting to, well, the city of Jacksonville, on the county, are, is starting to see not only an increase with marijuana usage, but opioid is being laced within marijuana. So now if that is changing, you know, people are not necessarily using the pills per se, but they're using, um, the comorbidity of drugs. Um, one particular drug might be the favorable for one community versus another. Are we seeing those dollars reach out to some of those underserved communities? So those individuals and those communities are not getting lost.
Well, we're, we're targeting the folks that, that are overdosing. So we had 26 fatalities last year and, um, we're giving Narcan. And in fact, I think one weekend, we gave it six times. So the officers, um, and, uh, Mr. Massey will tell you that, because he scrutinizes our budget. We had to go back and, and reorder Narcan to make sure that we, that every officer can carry that. And so the, this program targets those folks that are overdosing. Whether they, whether they overdose and there's a fatality or whether they overdose or whether we, um, can target those kids to, to get them the counseling they need. Cause we know that one of the best practices is, and with, when we talk about the ACEs scores, if we can focus on those ACEs scores and reduce those, then we can break that cycle. Cause this is not a problem that we can arrest away at. I mean, we can make arrests and we do make arrests, but it's not a problem that we can arrest away at because it's an addiction. And so to break that addiction, you know, first we have to work with those and, and, and getting them into that, to that treatment. Cause we know that, uh, Councilman Jackson sits on the, uh, oversight board and it takes an average of five to seven days before that person leaves the back door and gets into that first level of treatment. Well, seven days for somebody who's craving an opioid is an eternity. And so one of the things we have to do is, is we have to narrow that gap so that when they come out of the DIX Crisis Center or they come out of the hospital, that we're narrowing that gap of time, that get them into the, to the long-term treatment. We have a long-term committee, in fact, tomorrow at 10, the long-term committee will meet and talk about, um, some of the challenges that folks have in getting into long-term treatment. Insurance will pay for that, but they won't pay for a application fee. And so that's a gap in those services. Transportation is a gap in those services. So all those things are things that, um, that that long-term committee has been looking at. And so they've raised, uh, they've raised several thousand dollars and we have been able to get folks from the back door of the DIX Crisis Center into a lot, some long-term treatment and hopefully have some success. Cause we know that it takes about two years, um, of, of aggressive treatment if somebody has an opioid addiction. And it's a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a serious issue in our community. Especially when, when we talk about homicides, fatal car crashes and suicides combined. More, more folks in our community are dying of opioids than, than those three.
One of the issues you were talking about, uh, is fentanyl is a big issue when it comes to.
Fentanyl is a big issue.
Laced in marijuana and other, other, uh.
If you, if you look at the news, the pill presses where they're pressing it to look like Valium and, and OxyContin and, and somebody's taking that fentanyl and they're overdosing. And that's why, that's why we're giving overdose, I mean, giving Narcan on a, on a very regular basis. Between us and the fire department, um, you know, it's, it's an, it's an everyday occurrence. I never thought police officers would carry Narcan, but every one of them carries it. And if you talk to them, probably every one of them has used it multiple times.
On the same people?
On the same people, yeah.
And one of the things with this grant is while it is opioid, it is also other substance.
Substance abuse period.
Yeah, that's why we're saying the comorbidity.
It is, it does address all of, ever, any, any of those are eligible for work under this program.
And that research component now, cause I, I addressed this in the oversight meeting, would be better at actually gathering that information than we have in the past because there was certain demographic information that wasn't kept. And you can't actually assess how you could, uh, you know, fight issue based on where the, where it's hitting certain areas if you're not gathering that information.
We put the information into OD mapping, which is, uh, which is, um, sponsored by the Department of, uh, excuse me, the DEA. And so we could actually look at, uh, where these opioid overdoses are occurred by neighborhoods if we needed to. And so that information has been going into the system. You know, as I, as I, as you probably heard me talk about, you know, from a crisis, mental health, substance abuse, you know, we spent, uh, enough to, to hire eight full-time police officers, eight full-time police officers spent that, their time on that in 2016. Over a million dollars of a 17 million dollar budget was, was, whether it was crisis related to drugs and, and, and you're right, Dr. Washington. I mean, that, that line is so blurred, it's very difficult to, to distinguish whether it's mental health, whether it's substance abuse. And what we gotta do is.
And you can separate it.
And so we, we really have to focus on the substance abuse first and also the mental health piece, which is, which is, uh, what we've been focusing on as far as, we all knew when we, when we opened DIX Crisis Center that it was going to be that first step. And now this, this second step that we're working on, which is the back door to the, to the treatment center is our, is, is really the greatest challenge that we'll face.
Another question I wanted to ask you, with the stakeholders, I noticed that with the research partners, the professors of sociology and criminology at the University of North Carolina at Wilmington, does, the stakeholders also would not include, like historically, black colleges and universities that work primarily with, not primarily, but have more evidence and research with communities of colors to help us to mitigate our communities of color here in Jacksonville?
So, so the, the, the research piece is, is part of gathering that data and also taking that data and looking at the best practices. So I'm sure that, uh, I'm sure that, and we'll, we'll have to check just to make sure. I'm sure they're looking at other communities and other communities, um, primarily, um, those, those kinds of communities that, uh, those, those communities that are disadvantaged in order to, to focus on what our, our solution should be.
Yes, one of the things, going back to University of North Carolina Wilmington, you know, I'm wondering if they're connected with the, like you said, the HBCUs and the, within the state and are they gathering information all together?
So I, I know that they're gathering information through the state. The, actually, um.
When we write the scope of work, we can actually include that to make sure that they are included.
Cause some, some organizations or schools might target these certain areas in particular.
I think about North Carolina Central and their law school.
Right.
Or North Carolina A&amp;T being the biggest HC, HCBU in the, in the state of North Carolina. So I, I just asked.
Well, you can actually go to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website and you can actually look at what, how many overdoses there's been this month?
Well, one overdose is one too many. Even, even, you know, when I was practicing in the hospital, Narcan was just something that was always around because too many patients on narcotics and anything can go haywire at any moment.
And, uh, Mr. Carter asked me to mention that the attorney general will be here next Thursday at 2:30 and during that time, he's going to talk about the opioid settlement. But he's, he's also been very instrumental in working with communities across the country or, and, and across the state to talk about his opioid abuse. He was here three years ago and did a roundtable discussion. I think the mayor hosted that roundtable discussion. And we talked about, talked about a, a number of different, uh, challenges that, uh, that, uh, there are in our, our state and our community in relation to opioids.
So the attorney general will be here next Tuesday after?
At 2:30, at the Center for Public Safety.
Thursday.
I'm Thursday, I'm sorry.
The 13th, 13th.
The 13th.
Is it open to the public or is it reserved seating?
Okay.
So Thursday, October, okay.
So are those peer counselors real at DIX Crisis Center?
So, I believe the current grant they are. However, DIX has withdrawn from this project. So we are working with the community paramedics to put the peer navigators with them. And then on an extension of the current one, we're going to work with the hospital to see about putting two within the hospital system. And with that extension, we're also going to look at doing some transitional housing and assistance for paying for treatment and things like that as well. That's not out of this grant, that's out of the continuation of the other grant. Because of COVID, some of those funds were not expended, so they allowed us, they granted us an extension so that we could actually make better use of those funds.
Good, instead of losing it.
Okay, council, you've been asked to, uh.
I'm waiting.
I said here in 2016 that we were a 12th top city for opioid abuse. Well, six years, are, are we seeing any results or is the problem getting worse? Are we addressing, are we helping?
I, I think we are. I mean, when I look at, uh, although, although I get discouraged, um, as Dr. Washington said, one, one overdose is too much. I mean, um, but, um, we, we actually are not in the top, uh, tier of the state right now. So I think some of the things that we've done, the COSAP grant, the other grant that we partnered with, uh, if you remember, we partnered with the, uh, with the, um, county to do MAT in the jail, provide a jail counselor for folks that have substance abuse and mental health. I think all those efforts have, uh, have been very beneficial for us. I think the fentanyl problem, as, as Councilman, uh, Jackson mentioned, I think the fentanyl problem has compounded that issue. And I actually, before COVID, I, I, we were seeing a lot better results. And then COVID hit and, uh, and, and I think that skyrocketed. And then, um, the fentanyl that's been coming in from, uh, China and Mexico has really put a damper on, uh, on the progress that we have made. So I, I do think we're better off than we were, um, being number 12 by that Castlight study. But I still think we got a long way to go.
So city has.
One short comment, well, two-parter. Um, I'm glad, really glad to see the peers component because you're absolutely hitting the nail on the head if, if there's not some sort of support to get them from point A to point B. We lose them every time out that back door. So that's incredibly important and kudos for making sure that's getting funded and expanded through any means possible here. But also, um, thanks to you and EMS fire response teams for all of the hard work. I went on, as you, as you well know, um, I went on one Friday night ride along with JPD and saw Narcan administered three times. It, it was a busy night, but the, it's, it's a situation where it's very real. And, you know, like I never saw it as a citizen. I don't see it in my neighborhood and my circle of friends. And I think, you know, for those who are watching, it, it sounds, you know, we, we're driving around Jacksonville, looking at how, you know, clean and green and pretty our city is and how things are growing and they look so nice. We don't see the problem that exists if it's not in your immediate family or friends network. You, you're likely not to see it, but it's very real. So thank you. Please pass along our appreciation to all of the men and women who work for you and face it every single day, day in and day out.
If it wasn't for the commitment of those, uh, officers and firefighters, um, there'd be, it wouldn't be 26, it would be, um, up in the hundreds. Um, they, they work very hard to make sure that, and, uh, they take that very seriously. They do a great job for us.
I'll thank them for us, please.
Last week I went to Carteret County and, um, it was a program sponsored by the health department there because they, their problem is terrible, but I know what they're doing. And I want to ask you a question about this. They're actually giving Narcan to citizens to provide. What's your thoughts about that?
Well, the community paramedics, when they respond, they will give, uh, the family members Narcan as well.
I got a box of it in my car right now, so I was wondering about beyond that. And I know we gotta be careful because some people will use, uh, use opioids and then if, uh, I mean, just for a ride, to then get high, use it, come back and use it again. I've heard that has been an issue too.
50% of everybody that takes an opioid has, 50% of our population has an affinity to get an addiction from opioids. And so, I mean, that's, that's the reason for the settlement. And, and I think, I think that, that danger when, uh, somebody starts with a bad knee and they start taking OxyContin and then, and then it progresses from there.
Has the STOP Act had a whole lot of effect on, on it at all?
I, I think the STOP Act has helped us. It helped us with, uh, with some of the, um.
Legal, legitimate.
Well, and it, it also helped us with, um, that, that process where somebody was going in and they get a, they'd have a knee and they'd get 30 or 40 OxyContin. So it's really restricts the amount they do that. I think the problem that we saw was the, the influx of fentanyl and, um, it's, it's changed the dynamics of, of what we're seeing.
It's a new wave.
And it's, it's much more powerful than the heroin.
I know we're, I know we're waiting on the money for the settlement, and I was going to ask that question. I'm glad to hear he's coming down. Who is, who's responsible for studying how we're going to use that amount of money that we're going to have? I mean, I'm sure there's some guidelines, but I'm sure it's probably going to be up to each community to decide how, how we wish to, what programs to do.
And the SOAR Committee, which is, you know, I'm real proud that the, the city and the county have actually worked very well together. They started with the SOAR team, which was that strategic team. They got the grant for the MAT and the Health IM. And so the SOAR Committee will give a presentation at that 2:30 meeting on Thursday and talk about what their recommendations are. And it's made up of city and county folks. Heather and Dr. Gilbert are, are both on that committee, and they're going to be making recommendations to the county and to us as to where, what that opioid money should be spent on.
Tracy Jackson's also on.
Yeah, Tracy Jackson, I forgot, yeah.
And I've sat in there a couple of different times, too, as well, because it's a lot of community partners. I think that's going to be best, you know, the best way to approach it, is the collaboration anyway. You know, a lot of these people already doing the work on the streets anyway, so.
The, the chief asked, I think, probably so that we, we have the money. We have the two installments for this year, but it's only $52,000, $54,000 for the city. The counties get a much.
Significant amount more.
So, but again, we'll be having some conversation with council, as you'll ultimately tell us how to spend that in accordance with the guidelines that are promulgated.
And a good thing, too, since we've already established a good working relationship on this issue, hopefully we'll put up, be able to put our money with the county and, and make that a little better.
I'm going to be very interested to see what their recommendations are. I'm, I'm going to assume that a lot of it's going to talk about that gap in services and how we, how we bridge that gap, but they, they've been working hard on it.
Anybody else?
Chief, Ashley, thank you very much. Presenting that, I know it was a kind of a last-minute thing there to hold up for that. We need a motion to, to allow them, authorize them to accept the grant and approve the motion amendment.
So move.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All of us in favor, say a five, say an aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Anthony, can we ask you a question real quick?
Sir. Yes.
We got a letter from, council got a letter from some citizens about a, what's been done concerning EMT's response on the trails on isolated portions. I understand we had an incident about a year ago where EMT wouldn't respond to an isolated section.
Yeah, we'll probably have to have T go up.
I just spoke to T, he's going to have a written response for you and your management report on Thursday. But work has been done on that as far as designating it, but there's, there's a report that can be given to you.
Okay.
Well, I mean, why don't you let T just talk about it? I mean, they're almost done.
Yes, sir.
The concern is.
Fire department's been working at it.
Yes, sure.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, we have identified all the entrances and exits of the trail. We GPS all those coordinates. There was actually a appointment set up for next week to GPS the mile markers. The signs will be made next week, the tunnels will be identified, and then it'll be uploaded into CAD, so.
That's only one part of the problem. The other part is EMS refused to, to get off of a highway, and obviously, it's a trail. If that had been somebody who could not have walked, I don't, you know, I don't know what they'd done, I guess they'd have walked agurian. But what if somebody had a heart attack where time was of the essence? And what, in my opinion, I was there, the EMS response was, was very unsatisfactory. And their refusal to drive down a trail, that paved trail they could have taken, and obviously, they couldn't go on the boardwalk.
Yeah.
But they didn't, but they refused. And they said policy would not allow them to take it off-road. So that's, that's got to be addressed.
Yes, sir. And, you know, I can only speak for Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services. We have vehicles, we'll do whatever we can to get down there. As a matter of fact, we purchased a UTV that stays on a trailer that we can hook up to that if a patient's located in a remote location, we can get to.
We put the trail out there. We have responsibility to make sure that the users are going to be able to be serviced safely, and if there's an emergency, taken care of. And I think this, you know, as unfortunate as this was, at least it wasn't a fatal or anything, just a, a broken shoulder, shoulder bone, so, but still.
Yes, sir.
We need to contact with the Director of Emergency Services.
So just to serve, I'm sorry.
I'd like to speak on it real quickly. We, ITS has worked through the GIS part of it and, and pinging where phone calls come from. One of the things they have done, while you cannot drive on a boardwalk, obviously, you do, you cannot take a vehicle on a boardwalk or a bridge, whatever, wood bridge, we created some access spots to the trail so that may help get closer to that person in need of help. I know it doesn't resolve completely what you're talking about, but my understanding is they were creating access points that would be, when phone calls come in, they're going to be able to locate them a lot better, and that way, they'll be able to park a vehicle and get the shortest possible route to whoever is in need of any assistance.
Were you exchanging this information with the county, with the MS?
I would assume.
So our dispatch centers talk back and forth, we work with Hand in Hand in Alto County, yes, sir.
When the new, when the new CAD, when the new CAD and records management system comes up, that information will be shipped to, it, it's not now because the CAD we're using is antiquated. So that new CAD will be October, or January the first, January the first now. And the, the information from the GPS, GPS coordinates, we ship to the county for those calls. So it's going to make it much more efficient. And I might mention that one of the reasons that we bought the ATV is so that patients could be transported, like, from National Night Out, but also, it's, it's at the main station so that it has, we have quick access. So if somebody is on that boardwalk, it's, it's a golf cart with a, with a stretcher on the back, and it can, the firefighters can do EMS and transport them from, and we've used it a number of times for different things, a lost child, and going back in those, those hard-to-get areas, so that we would have that capability.
Okay. Dive into the forum, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, we'll make sure to share all information with the county. We'll, we'll push it out as soon as we have it. We'll make sure to share it with all of our personnel and just call a meeting with, with all parties and, heck, if we've got to go out and do an, an actual exercise out there with them, it doesn't hurt us at all, especially with all of our team. We'll get out there as active as possible.
Good idea.
Thank you.
You know, ask them about their policy not being able to take it off, off of a paved highway.
There's a lot of dirt rakes around here.
That was very frustrating.
Best in the county.
So we have, do we have this, one of those? One city moments?
We do.
Yes, sir.
So this past week, we had the fortunate opportunity to have Lejeune High School out here, and so.
Look at them all.
They came out.
Look at the Lejeune High School students.
Rose was fantastic to welcome them, and they were able to come and be at City Hall to see what all we're doing here and around the offices. You, you see Rose and Alexis there, and then our media team as well showed them around. Lisa was able to show them how we operate, show some of our facilities, and to look at our, our media room itself. You know, that'll get those smiles going from a heartbeat when they can see everything that we're doing tonight. So if they're watching tonight, Mayor, then they're right here, and we're excited to have them as part of our team this past week. Fantastic. In other news, oh wait, there's more. One of our, one of our fellow staff members, Stessa was going, trying to leave at some point during the day to go home to her family, and she had a flat tire. So Mr. Ryan King went out there and helped her change her tire so that she could finally stop work and go home. And if there's anything that's a one-city moment, it's one employee helping another employee so that all parties included could go home. If you thought Ryan was just someone to talk about good plans, you're wrong. He's actually a helping hand that can change a tire, and so you never know what kind of talents you've got in the office.
Call AAA anymore.
That is. It's a new policy in staff. If you have an issue with your car, call Mr. King. That's our two moments, Mayor.
Would you entertain a motion now to go into closed session? Personnel.